Okay, I believe it is 10 o'clock and so we will start with an education from Bishop, Michigan.
That's great. My Lord, we come before you thanking you for this day, Lord, and children of me, and we rejoice in it. Lord, we come now to conduct the business of the county. We ask your blessings and grace, and, Lord, your wisdom and guidance as we make decisions and deliberate upon the issues that we force. We give you all the thanks and praise for every blessing we receive. Bless our nation, Lord, bless our state and county. And we thank you now. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and eternal.
And this time our calls to the world for our regular scheduled meeting, November 4th, 2015. The first item on the agenda is approval of amendments. We have quite a few amendments to approve. September 21st, 2015, October 7th, 2015, and two special sessions on October 15th, 2015, and October 20th, 2015. Do I entertain a motion? Do we need to do them one by one? Can we do them all at one time?
They're always fine.
Okay.
Great.
Do we have any corrections still?
I'm challenged. How many motions have we accepted? Seven minutes. As corrected and have been submitted to the clerk about various commissions.
Now here is Simon.
I'll say that motion, ma'am chairman.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to accept the amendments as already as corrected. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Amendment standing. Approved as corrected. I agree. Agenda adjustments, are there any adjustments to the agenda? Here or none? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Motion's been made and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, delegations. Okay, no unannounced delegations? Announced delegations? None. Administrative reports, do we have those in our packet before you? County manager, report.
This is for September, I'm sorry, for September 21st through October the 23rd. New ductwork has been installed at the EIC building. The next step is for the building to be cleaned and retested by the EI group, and the testing will then help determine the county with its next steps. Melissa Lawrence might have moved into new offices in what was the conference room in the administrative building. Finance has relocated into our former offices, and the former finance office is now the conference room. According to Jerry Jennings, Division One engineer, a traffic study has been conducted, and since this memo was typed, we have received information from Mr. Jennings regarding the traffic study. And it basically said that it does not need additional lights, that they will not pay for additional lights, the speed limit does not need to be changed, and that if we do wish to put lights, it would be the county's responsibility. And I believe, I know that Deputy Campbell has received a copy of that, and we will get a copy to all of the commissioners as well. Okay, it is in the...
It's in our correspondence, provided in the cost of the typical cost associated with it is 4,000 miles per year, so we signed.
Okay. And that came, I believe, the day after this had been sent out, so, thank you. September 28th through October 2nd, Krista Berman and I attended the School of Government's Introduction to Public Employment Law class. On October the 9th, I attended the Gade County Agent and Adult Task Force meeting to hear further details of the proposal made during the October 7th commissioner meeting by Roger Vansmith concerning the senior center at the Buckland Plantation Site. From October 12th through 14th, Joy Greenwood, Mrs. Millfine State Park Superintendent, and I attended a Balancing Nature and Commerce Workshop at the Burne James Center. And I provided a summary from Kathy Davidson, who is Abrahams Commission Executive Director in your packet. On October the 20th, Board of Commissioners and Board of Education met to hear more details about the condition of Central Middle School. Now, on October 21st, the Abrahams Regional Transportation Committee met in Manio for the quarterly meeting. Several county transportation plans were approved for supplemental to DOT. Some methodology for how projects will be scored for the next available funding was discussed and approved. An update was also provided on projects and affairs in Division One. You got any questions?
I thought I had one that you asked.
Okay, any questions before the county manager?
No questions after that portion, ma'am chairman. However, Ms. Rogers, the DOT meeting at Manio, was even discussed, or can anybody bring up the fact about lots at school on that highway or what did you?
No, because this was for the region. I spoke with Mr. Jennings, and at that meeting, that's when he told me we would receive a letter within the next month. And then, I believe, two or three days later, we actually received the letter that's included in your packet.
Okay. Well, thank you for your report. Here is the position of Mr. Jordan.
The issue with courthouse, that's what we discussed, not the whole business.
Yes, correct. Okay, moving to finance and tax. Ms. Lane?
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
I'm happy to report that the tax notices have been sent, so any day now, you should be getting those. I just want to say I appreciate the board's patience, as well as those county citizens, the county manager. I want to thank my staff. You know, it's been not an overwhelming ordeal, but it's put that, you know, added stress in our department. I just want to thank everybody. So they have been there, should be getting those any day now, so yes, ma'am. And you had a chance to look at those, the collector's report we submitted there.
Just for information, how late were they?
How late?
Yes.
Well, typically, you know, counties tend to track the August, the third week of August at the latest for those. But in years past, Gates has utilized July, the second week of July, for having no sense. So we were in essence, three months behind. If we were tending to go live May 1st, we didn't go live until that first week of August. That's a three-month window right there. So if we take the August, September, October, that was our three-month delay, if you will, for a number of reasons. It was extra work, not only for Keystone, but also the staff with extra data entry in two systems. I don't put the blame, you know, I absorbed some of that blame as well with getting the scope of work done with the data conversion, as well as waiting on Keystone to fix some problems. So those issues being said, we were literally almost three months behind, so...
If I may, general statutes do not say that tax bills have to be mailed. It's just a kind of an understanding, because that has been questioned, I have received that question. The general statutes do not say that tax bills must be mailed to each individual citizen. It's kind of a courtesy that each county provides to their citizens.
That's right, as a reminder. That is true. Thank you, Captain.
What county, what statute do you call it?
I don't remember which one it is.
You don't mind? Before, so the public will know, we changed software systems.
We sure did, and that's...
...part of the law.
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, added work, if you will, certainly, you know, with regard to the staff. Like I said, when you envision doing dual data entry in two systems for more than three months, that is in and of itself a task. Dual collections, much like customer service was having to do, sketch in a house in two systems. Doing payments, doing listing in two systems, like, you know, we did with personal property, that creates delay. So some of that, obviously, is Keystone, and some of it also with the burden that was placed on the tax office. So, you know, with that being said, we looked at that three-month window. We anticipated going live May 1st, and there we were the first week of August, just setting sale. So I just want to thank the board again, certainly the citizens. They've been real good. Any prepayments were applied? There were over $98,000 in prepayments with no delay, so those people who were custom and usually paid and started paying early, they could do so, you know. So that was no delay. It wasn't like it was a kind of a overwhelming, you know, those individuals who'd like to pay early, they're on limited income, whatever their reason is. So they were applied, you know, with no other kind of calamity, so, yeah. All right.
Do you want questions?
Oh, we can't have any questions on that. As you can see, the prior year percentage will appear in November, given that last week of October, that prior percentage was not, I would say, applied because of the, at that time, you know, when we did not get close out, which was last Friday. So the prior percentage for years past will appear in the November report. You'll see some good activity through ZLS. Certainly, we can't say enough about their good work. We've had a good bit of activity. I will say, as far as Ellis, unfortunately, Mr. Travis Ellis, he had two brothers who were critically injured, not long ago, in a car wreck, so he has been kind of distracted, if you will, with being with them in the hospital. I just wanted to mention that to the board. It's not like he's been, you know, avoidable, you know, with us, but I just mentioned that to the board, so I know he's been distracted. He has those three accounts. His paralegal, Kim Sealy, is still addressing those accounts, and there's four, but I just wanted to let the board know that was the situation for Mr. Ellis.
You said three remain there.
Yes, just three accounts, yes.
And the $31,254.20, is that a result of five cases or nine cases?
It's a culmination of probably more than actually 18 to 22, I mean, and fair, I mean, within that, because we might have one individual who had various lots, if you will, so that might have been 10 lots, if you will, one person, so...
Are they final transactions on those, or is it people making installments?
No, those are payments in full on some accounts to stop it from further, you know, proceedings.
Okay.
And oftentimes, we recommend that the 2015 taxes be also paid, since it is in delinquent status, we do recommend that, even though they're technically not delinquent, we recommend that the 15s be incorporated in that final tally, so...
Since the Department of Motor Vehicles collecting personal property tax for vehicles, are they charging an administrative fee? I know I got my bill the other day, and according to get your license renewed, you've got to pay that tax bill. What kind of administrative fee will be paid, DMB, to process it and then send the money back to the county?
We don't get that specific fee reference. We get that total collected, if you will, and that fee is incorporated, whether it's a general levy or the, with the town incorporated. We don't get the fee itself breakdown of what it costs. We get that total revenue reported each month as a cumulative. We don't get any specific, you know, fees.
So if our citizens are being charged $188 for their vehicle, personal property tax, the county gets that full $188 as far as you know, and they use some other means to offset their administrative costs for processing and collecting?
Yes, I would say so, because we get that total amount reported. If it's $220 or $188 or whatever that fee would be, it's incorporated in the final NTBS report that we get every month. We don't get any specific breakdown, other than the town and the county separate as it's reported. I'm not sure. Ms. Sandy, can we get any additional?
We do. We're charged a percentage per collection, for every collection. They charge us a percentage based on whether it was paid by credit card or not paid by credit card, or additional credit card fees and their collection fees. And you sent me an email the other day that that fee is increasing from October, November, and they were...
Yeah.
But it's a percentage that they charge us. We receive the money in full, and there is a line in the tax budget that you all approved for those administrative fees for DMB collections. So every month, we get the full amount, but it's offset by those fees, and we post them separately so that the tax department shows that full revenue, but there's a separate expenditure budget to show the fees that the state is charging.
Like $30,000 allocated typically per budget year. I don't think we exceeded that last year, I think we...
Yeah, you know, we're still in the first year or two. We're expecting it to be between $30,000 and $40,000 per year for those fees.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to know if, what percentage it is, you know, let's one percent, two percent.
We can forward you the email. They sent an email out the other day. They're increasing it by 200, so whatever the fee is, and we received it, you know, they haven't reported it to me the other day. Looking forward to, you know, it's all part of the process.
I don't think there's an option for us to participate in that.
No, sir.
You know, it's arbitrary, but it would be interesting to know, because, you know, we may want to contact legislators if they're going to increase fees, and we may collect that cheaper in-house.
Well, the reason they did it this way is because our collection rates across the state were so low because of the way the process was. So by doing this, they've increased our collection rate substantially, but it's being offset by the fees. So I'm not sure, you know, really if we've gained any ground or not, but they're handling it and charging us. So I think if they're going to do the billing, they're going to handle it, and they're requiring people to pay it ahead of time. They've got that process in place, and I believe this has been in the works for 10 or 15 years, because we were collecting additional interest and penalties for years and sending it to the state while we put this system in place. There's no option as to whether or not we participate.
Yeah, well, they're watching, like I said, because if it gets out of Kilmer, then, you know, General Assembly needs to be aware that things need to happen to try to keep it as low as possible so the county can retain as much of those revenues as we can.
Okay, Anne, additional questions? Back in Ms. Lane?
Okay, we did have one refund.
Okay, that's right. We just have one refund?
Speaking of DMB, it was a lady who turned in the tags, the airfare.
Okay.
Refund number one in the amount of $102.10.
Okay, and you have attached the, all the forms that we need to see from the...
That is correct. And quite truthfully, I don't know why the dealer informed her to turn in tags when she was purchasing a new vehicle. That was not necessary, so she was, you know, in terms of not being misled, but there was no reason if she was just going to put it on a, you know, 2015 Chevy Sonic. So anyway, that was the scenario, and she turned them in and, or do a refund and issue them plates, so... But you have the attached documentation there, and... Her...
I'll entertain a motion for the request for refund number one. It is in the amount of $102.10.
Sure. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any additional discussion? Here or none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? That has been approved. And I believe, Anne, a packet, you told, but you had some FYI information about a building lot.
Yes, ma'am. House Bill 168, which was approved, that's going to affect all the counties, obviously in the state, with regard to how we tax them. If that builder makes an application, typically, it'll be during that regular listing period beginning in January. If the application is made for the exemption, the county must tax at the raw land rate, if you will, versus individual lot rate. Let's just say, we theoretically will break out maybe $20, $25 for a lot if it's a five-acre tract, and we take one acre and break that out and say $20,000. We cannot tax at that $20,000 rate. We have to tax at the cumulative land rate if that five acres was generally, you know, $20,000, and that's by law. But the application has to be made, that's the one stipulation. Department of Revenue is going to generate a form countywide that, you know, all counties will use a standard form. So that's going to invariably affect the tax base and what Gates will, you know, and all counties will be able to list as their tax base, so I just wanted to mention that. It'll be interesting. It'll be tested, of course, with, you know, within the Board of ENR as we move forward with some larger counties, as we test those and people who appeal, those builders that appeal. Right now, it's not retroactive, those lots that are currently in existence and have been, that may subject to change, but we certainly hope not. Those existing lots certainly retain their value moving forward, so it'll be interesting to see how that plays out, and kind of a lot of interesting sides from, you know, Department of Revenue, they're following it pretty closely and whatnot.
Let's talk about the effective date of this, January 1. Is that right?
Well, actually, it's July 1 for those lots, and existing, as of July 1, but the application will need to be made January 1 if an existing lot, let's say, is July 1, so yes, so...
So this was, you say, effective July 1, 2016?
2015, yes.
So we're talking retroactive?
Well, for, yes, for just July 1 going forward, of course, not those that we may have some in, obviously, Drunk Hill or various areas, so... But the application will be able to be made in January for something that existed beginning of July, so...
Now, we will definitely run into the "I didn't know" statement. So I'm wondering, what is our best effort to make public aware? Is this, certainly, we should have something on our website. I don't know if we have the capability, but we have on our website, House Bill 168 with a red block around it, important notice or something. I mean, we need to do our best effort. I appreciate you bringing it to our attention. We need to do our best effort to get that out. I don't know if this is a, you know, a stuffer, what a bill stuffer kind of thing, or what we need to do.
Oh, you're certainly...
The concern is, is when these things, when that question does come, we need to be able to look back and say, you know, we did this on this day, this on that day, and we still, people are still going to miss it. But then we get into, do we make an exception? And this is a House bill, this is a law.
Yes.
So if we're not going to, we're not going to say, okay, and I know we're not going to say, don't worry about it, we have to go by the rule. I just want to be sure that we do that. Maybe if you posted something at your office or anywhere, somebody's making any kind of payment in the county?
Yeah, and certainly those builders, and I haven't had anybody certainly within the county, but I know, I know Passapatanha's already been closed. There's a big builder over there who's already, you know, approached their tax administrator who's curious about that. So those builders are already aware that this was on the horizon as far as that, and I'm not sure, you know, and Gates can proceed with posting it. The form will be available on the website, certainly anyway, when that's ready, and probably late December for the application form, I'll say. And, you know, that, I'll say, some of the builders already are aware, because they want to take full advantage of getting that exemption, certainly, but that's not, you know, not far. We can, you know, if the board would wish, we could post something to that nature.
Just consideration, I think.
I think we need to kind of wait until we get the form from the state, or aren't they making?
They will be, yeah, they'll be composing that form.
I mean, we can make a, we can do something on the website.
Right, just kind of a knowledge base, because there'll be some condition for late applications, if you will, much like it is, and those people who set the dignity deadline or wanted to appeal, there'll be some conditions for them to appeal that, say, I didn't know, and here it is late February, and they're making the application for the exemption. So much like with any appeal, they'll have opportunity to do that as well.
I think the law says the Board of Equalization Review, which is the kind of conditions.
Yes, ma'am, yeah. So it'll be interesting to watch that, yes.
Okay, thank you for that update. Thank you for that information. And we will try to publicize that, too.
Madam Chairman, I'd like, just a question of curiosity, if you would, Ms. Lane. If you and your colleagues, did you all have an opportunity or have you discussed much about 105277, Form 1D, that was deferral of taxes?
In terms of, as it relates to the new house bill?
Yes.
That was brought up with, actually, in Pender County. That discussion was made because, you know, if the highest and best use is to break a 50-acre tract into a subdivision, then one would argue that they've simply, they've changed the design or the focus of that land. They've removed it from land use, present use, or either, you know, with forestry management or so, and the highest and best use is lots. So regardless, if it loses that present use and rollback is built and lots are created, it kind of falls into a different, you know, category anyway, but we will still have to reference the raw market land aside from the present use. We, you know, it'll lose that present use value rate, and it'll have a market, and that's what we'll tax at, whether we're running $20,000 an acre or $30,000. We'll still have to just tax it, you know, based on what that market value is. And technically, it loses its wording and language that would have it qualified for present use. When you're in cultivation and you cease to stop that cultivation and you break out, let's say, 20 lots, and you're not farming it, and you build infrastructure, your roads, your lights, your sewer, it loses that typical language that's associated with present use. So technically, it would, you know, it would be disqualified anyway. But there's been some discussion even in Pender, I think there's a case of even in the early stages now being debated, if, you know, large farm tract and you're breaking up, you know, some lots, so... It'll be, it'll be tested in the, at the Board, Property Tax Commission, and I'm sure, and that's how we get new rulings, of course, with those appeals.
Well, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Any additional comments, questions? Back to Mrs. Lane.
Okay.
And we look forward to our tax bills. I can't believe I've seen that.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Okay, Sandy has left the room.
She has spoken amendments later.
Later, okay. Any other departments reports or any questions to any of the departments here that are here?
Madam Chairman, I'd like to comment, emergency management, the decon at the sheriff's office and many others, including county manager's office were involved here. I don't know if there's any discussion about that or anything anybody wants to bring forward as pertaining to that.
Mr. Wayne, I think it's you.
Just to review what he's referring to, North Carolina National Guard Civil Support Team, 42nd Civil Support Team, came two weeks ago and conducted one of their training exercises at our EOC facility. It was a weapons of mass destruction hazardous material examination exercise. We had approximately 50 people on site that day. They were doing their role play for an exercise that they have coming to recertify their team. We did tie in the sheriff's department, one of the fire departments for just for water for decon, and then our staff and the, and the management of that. So it was a fantastic opportunity to see state resources utilized and to get, to meet those guys. Entertaining questions, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
I have a question on the water department. On the second page of this report, page 66, I didn't quite understand the statement under sewer ongoing. Kimmy, you may want to clarify that. I believe...
I believe there are still one-on-one issues.
On page 66 of our report, all right, well, is I.
Your second page.
Which, which report? Because I have reissued the August.
The sewer ongoing.
Yeah, but is it the August or September?
It's October 20.
Okay.
October 20.
October 20.
That, that's I and I, the groundware infiltration.
That's still.
Okay, that's.
And what's that?
It's groundware infiltration. That's just the lingo that Dean refers to for infiltration.
In ground, you know?
Mm-hmm. I believe we still have some minor issues. That, that's going to kind of be an ongoing thing because of the way the design and they lay the manhole for kind of bottom of ditch on 158. I suppose we see the manhole covers. Unfortunately, the only way that you can really find it is when it's raining. And I'm going to get up Mike McAllister and try to get him to get a crew down, and it's going to be expensive, but to conduct the study to try to figure out when or where the I and I issues are.
Now, so could you look back on installation contract, whatever, of course, and see what our timeframe for one year, one year?
And it's, it's not the same, that some of the issues might not be coming from the school. I found one issue at the middle school where there was a cleanout coming from the concession stand that tied into the graduate system, that the six-inch manhole cover had been hit from mowing, and there was nothing but an open six-inch porch. Anytime it rained, the whole football field drained that little spot. I made Joe Louvre aware of that, and that's been repaired. So I'm constantly trying to look and troubleshoot it.
Oh, how happened?
A mower headed.
A mower, a mower.
The project on 13, is that about completed?
Got a call and my request is to come out, and I said, I've got a commissioners meeting today, I'll be there soon as they get out. They had roughly 700 foot of line they had to relocate. Their intentions were to reuse the existing main, and then EB Williams and the state come up and said, no, the existing main is too close to edge of pavement, we need to relocate. So now they've come back and they're putting in that section. They're, they've just shy of 100 foot from finishing that project as far as infrastructure in the ground. Then there'll be pressure testing, coronation, sampling before it can be turned over and analyzed.
It's coming to an end, that project.
Ah, sure, I hope so. I hope so, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, I believe the bridge was the issue at the current time.
Well, it, I think, I think as far as water, that has nothing to do with me. Our water line stops at Powell Lane. They have opened the four lanes for the majority of it, next back down to two lane at Powell Lane south.
So basically, I don't have problems with water line or with the old.
That's correct. Did you ever hear anything about the driveway or anything else from that?
He sent me a message back, and it, I believe it stated that they would talk to the state again and let us know something.
Just let you know what we're talking about. It's one of the hydrants at intersection 158, 13. The way the design changed for that intersection, it pretty much eliminated access to a fire hydrant without going about 70 foot through a six-foot deep ditch to access it. And we lobby to have a driveway put in to gain access for emergency uses.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Thank you, Mrs. Smith. Ms. Baptiste?
I have a couple of questions. I just want to know what was the status of the, with the so farm moratorium, our progress on coming up with.
The planning board met on September 15, I think, and we have been making progress on getting the ordinance together and getting some issues or items that they needed further clarification on, getting that cleared up.
And I believe it's been an extension, going to have a information session for the.
Yes. I believe they're in, in contact with somebody, and they're trying to really just need, right now, it's just a matter of milling down dates of when they're available and when they're available.
Okay. Do you appreciate, I believe, there's two classes that have been polished that have been a long time coming?
Yeah, that's building.
Okay, building. That's building. But anyway, we, I've had comments from the people concerned, concerning the demolition of Pierce Place, and I believe there was one on the offside of the county.
It's not complete yet.
Oh, that one's not complete.
It's halfway. Hopefully, it'll be, according to what was out last night, it should be finished today, Marty.
Okay. Any questions?
Code enforcement on complaints that we have, we have a backlog or we all got caught up?
Well, we do have, I would not say that we necessarily have a backlog. We have some complaints that we cannot pursue because the property is in foreclosure. And until they complete the foreclosure process and we can actually contact the bank to do the work, it remains on the books. So it's kind of a backlog, but it's, it's not by anything that we can get around until the foreclosure process is completed.
And for repeat offenders?
We're coming up with a policy and procedure guideline. I know Mr. Carver has been in contact with other code enforcement officers in different counties. So we're just trying to establish a recognizable policy and procedure that we're going to go by consistently. And once he is complete with that, I'll put it in the packet for y'all to look at and just give you a heads up on. This is what we're going to do or what we're lawfully able to do.
I would like to see, I don't know, a little bit too much, but the number of complaints, the list of complaints that are being reported, sometimes we see some, some come in, it would help us know if a place is on that list, you know, rather than trying to get it on the list. Because I, you know, I see, I see, I go down 158, I wonder how long has it, you know, if anybody has taken a look at that?
Okay. So you would actually like to see a spreadsheet with?
What properties or?
Okay.
All that code enforcement list, you know, if they can resolve, you know, fine, take them off, but those are outstanding. And if it's not outstanding, then maybe some others that may need to be put in.
That won't be a problem, because Mr. Carver does turn one in to me every month, and that's where I get the numbers from. That's, it's not a problem to attach that to the state.
And of course, I know some of our repeat offenders.
Yeah.
We're very familiar with some, 32 and different parts of the county, and we get calls, and I'm sure you get calls too.
Yes.
Might be, would you like to see, but recommended plan of action? Might be if you had a column or something.
Or what actions to.
And as far as listing the, the properties that you had called out, might be interesting if you had multiple calls, and we could see how many calls you had too.
And, and, Madam Chairman, if I can add to that, possibly if fellow commissioners and county managers make so too, Ms. Baptiste, and that would be, we could look and see if any of them, if there's been any litigation, and then maybe what the adjudication happens or resolved.
Because we do have, we do have a column for when it's closed down and what kind of action he has taken on it, you know, like the letter was sent, such and such a date, made contact in person, such and such a date. Recommended action, plan of action, could add that multiple call column, even a litigation column.
Not too much work, I think, after you.
Okay. It is just those three columns, because it's just those three columns, because we have everything else that you guys mentioned, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Moving along, the, through the department reports to correspondence, we have an invitation to the Christmas parade on December 12 at 3:00 p.m. So be sure to put that on your calendar. We also, there's a letter from North Carolina Department of Transportation that we referenced earlier about schools. And we had information from our forestry department service. Okay.
For, for sake of discussion, I know it's not specifically on the, it's on the agenda. They say that we want to put the light that's going to cost $12,000. At this time, if it's their determination based on their studies, for us to move forward and putting them in there, I think it's a cost that we couldn't justify only to say that, you know, hey, it would make us feel better, or make citizens feel better. So, you know, at this time, I, you know, I consent some towards to not move forward with those lights, but I would walk toward any.
Why is he, why is he not moving forward?
Well, he didn't. He didn't say anything, if I'm wrong, he didn't say anything about any hazard, any statistics of.
Well, he does say, he said we receive five years of data and that no major accidents during school hours.
You're stopped in traffic, stopped in traffic on, I don't know, alcohol major highway, I wouldn't say that, in rain. If you have anything more to add, it is a deputy, sometimes stopped in traffic, it's not safe. I know that makes sound crazy, but, I mean, that, that road is designed, it's blowed through. And he says, and he does say, as you said, Ms. Hudson, five years of damage location analysis, the not ability to make the crashes. I know we've had a couple of our deputies that say they've had some near misses out there. I think they're speaking, especially at the high schools.
Absolutely. Well, and the middle schools, too.
Certainly not trying to get away from it, I just, I know that one of the issues out here at, at the Stories intersection, we had several meetings with DMT about putting the light out there, and they were, they gave us the statistics, and we're dead against doing that. I would also bet that if we put the light up, we'd be responsible for maintaining the thing, replacing it, updating it. But that's all I have to say, say about that. Jordan?
I, I'll be, I'll say that the signage, especially at Butler, needs to be changed from the yellow to high intensity, yellow, green. And also.
They said they would do that.
Right, they're going to do that. And they do point out that you're talking $12,000 each school, not $12,000 for the schools, and we'd be talking about $36,000. You know, I think at this time, we've expressed it, Highway Department, we've done due diligence, they've done a study, and, you know, at this time, you know, we could just move forward with our recommendation and just have them to update the signage and carpet and keep, keep the traffic flow as good based on their recommendation.
And in addition to that, too, I'm sure the governor's highway safety program has probably been touched, but I wonder if we could pitch them again. They may have additional funds. If, I don't know, county managers had that opportunity to talk to Highway Safety Commission. If there were fatal accidents or one cause or injury at the, they would not like to hear from us if we attempted to try thirteen of ten, and they declined that.
Well, we started to make inquiries to see if they felt it was just to have something else involved.
Were you thinking that we need a light there?
Flashing lights, absolutely. I think in both locations, just for, you know, traffic has increased, our deputies and citizens both have complained as to near misses. And I don't know if we have a particular accident, maybe Chief Deputy Hathaway is aware of one, but I'm not aware of one.
And when we're talking about flashing lights, you're talking like a caution light or?
That would, that would activate during, during school hours.
There's some, there are some signs on the side of the road that had flashing lights on them as well. I've seen at other locations.
At Winfall?
And some of them are solar operated. I think maybe if we can do some inquiry on what's available, and the state, they put it in $12,000 each, but if we could do a little inquiry about what is available, that possibly we could put up that would be approved by the state. I mean, just get a little more information on it. All we've got is what they're saying in their calls, that if, you know, we do feel that lights are something that we do want to have, we go out and, let's find a little more information on what's available. Is it, can it only be done by the state? Are there, you know, we could probably do this project maybe for several thousand dollars rather than $36,000.
And I know, like, one was at the primary school they have, on 37, they do, the light is on the sign.
For some reason, that seems to get my attention a little better.
But I mean, we, I think we need to check into that and the government's highway safety committee, and also just to see what is.
Kind of like you all get the, what's the way?
I can tell you that, I think it was the town of the hospital, I think it was the town, they had a crew in here from Winston-Salem doing their lights, and some signage all over Haski this year. And I, I think they were, as far as Winston-Salem, if I remember correctly, seeing them on their truck.
Do we need to have a motion to direct it, or can we just direct?
You know, for a regular, I like making a motion that we have the county manager looking to do the options of installing caution lights at the two schools at least.
Kids' camp high school and middle school.
Right. Versus using the state's proposal to install it, $12,000.
Okay. Commissioner Jordan has made a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any encore discussion?
I wonder if he and I, maybe options for county manager looking, something that's came to my people mind, and that is also Department of Correction, they make signs there, so I don't know if that's an option with DOT.
Excuse me, but we make our own road signs already, so that if there was a sign that could be made, I feel like we could take care of doing that perhaps, if necessary. That would double check with Philly, because that's something that Philly, the department does.
Okay. Motion's been made, second. Any additional discussion? Care none? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? So we'll wait and hear your report. Okay, I believe that finishes up the administrative reports. There are no court hearings today. On the old business, we have the. hearings today, uh, on the old business, we have the, um, historic courthouse, uh, in your packet, you had a letter from Mrs. SASS and her recommendation, and county manager, you have the, you.
As indicated in that October meeting, I hadn't seen this right before the meeting began, and since then, I know we've had time to review this email, I've also spoke with James Andreas, John Zellweger, and Ree Thomas. Um, I'll start with John Zellweger, I spoke with him yesterday, he actually called, and he is urging us to take the route, route that Shelley SASS has recommended with this, um, company, that is, um, WJ E, he has recommended, he felt like that they, based on the information he's received and the background information he had looked up on them, that they were perhaps the best people in the country, actually, to do the type of work that is needed, he was highlighting some of the work that they've done, not only in the United States, but also the Middle East. He said they have done work in North Carolina, and he gave the example, they did some work on the roof with Grove Park Inn, he said, one recommendation he would make if we went with them, or even if we had a discussion with him, was to include, of course himself, I feel like if we talked to them, we would need to include James Andreas and perhaps Ree Thomas as well, to see exactly what phase one actually entails, because the email says that selected material samples may be obtained for possible testing, and that they want to review available reports and visually examine interior and exterior base or any walls, they would test the plumbness survey to better ascertain magnitudes of deformation. And he said, the fifty-eight hundred dollars seemed to him might be a little high for that, and that's why he wanted us to double check with them to see if that cost was perhaps the goal, and he, he felt this is the way we need to go. Whenever I spoke with James Andreas, he felt like this report, because he saw this information as well, he feels like a lot of the work that they want to do in phase one has already been accomplished by either clear skates, through work seen, or documentation from Miss SASS, through work that he and all the people who work for his construction company have documented from information from Ree Thomas, plus going all the way back to other documents from previous contractors and consultants on this project, he felt, like I said, it was a repeat of what's already been done, but that he understood that we needed information to make a decision on what route to go. I also spoke with Ree Thomas and let him know about this information that we have received, and I finally just asked him, I said, we have put forth, I feel like, good faith, I said, how do you document that the county has put forth a good faith effort to try to repair the building before the commissioners can make a decision and it be approved, so to speak, by the historical and North Carolina Cultural Resources, to tear one wall, two walls, three walls down, if that's one is most feasibly, uh, were most economically sound for the county? And he said, he feels like the county has put forth a good faith effort with all of the studies that's been conducted in the eighties, the nineties, the early two thousands, with all the work that's been done to date with clear skates, with having James Peet come in, with having Shelley SASS come in, and everything, he said, um, you just need to, he said, if that's the decision the commissioners come to, you just need to look at, how much do you need to build, you need to rebuild one wall, two walls, three walls, and of course, are you gonna cover it back up with stucco? He said regardless of what we do, he does not suggest taking the stucco off the rest of the building, I shared with him what I had discussed with James Andreas previously about the deterioration of the bricks and the stucco not, the stucco was put on in the nineteen thirties with cement, and it does not allow the bricks to break the way it should, and he's, James Andreas said that if you take the stucco off, and Mr. Peet was in agreement, that, that might cause more damage to the bricks, Ree Thomas was in agreement, he said what he has seen done in Charleston, some of the same situations occurred, and that as the stucco fell off, they replaced it with live stucco, he said, so it might be a slightly different color, color, but it helps add to the age and the historic look of the building, and he said, everyone who's ever been to Charleston has seen numerous historic houses in various colors and the ways that it looks, he said, but, uh, he thinks that we've done a good job getting water away from the building with underground drainage, he said that he would be willing, his questions were asked, to stand behind us if we decided not to go with testing and decided to rebuild one wall, two walls, three walls, that he would be willing to go with our recommendation and to support it.
So, the testing basis, they're gonna tell us whether or not we can repair existing rather than tear down the building, is that right?
Well, like I said, this report from, it was Timothy Crowe, that was, their recommendation was that they test the plumbness of the walls, and that they look at general extent of deterioration and deterioration patterns, as well as reviewing all of the reports that's already been compiled up from Miss SASS, Machete, and anyone else who's ever looked at the building, once they do that for fifty-eight hundred dollars, then they would decide if additional testing of the brick is done, and conversation that Chair Hawker and I had with John Zellweger and James Andreas, we were all in agreement that the brick is the issue.
Are they, they recommended to go ahead and tear it down, you do?
No, no, who, who are you saying recommend, no one has recommended that, that is something that I threw out based upon information that we've received, trying to look at finances, and if that is the last thing that can be done, is that what needs to be done.
So, is it clear escape recommendation, go ahead and, and repair, in other words, under, uh, secure the stabilization, whether or not any board concrete or whatever under it, and just come back up to stucco, is that their recommendation as it stands?
They've not really made a recommendation, their recommendation is to contract with this company and have them come in and do additional testing.
But I don't have much problem with that.
Well, I think, um, and I spoke to Natalie about this, I sent you, sent her an email a while back, it looks like to me that what, what we're seeing here is somebody's gonna say, let us do this testing and tell you again what you already know, is what concerns me, um, I mean, we, we've talked about, we've been told that, that the wall, you know, the stucco is separating, the, the bricks are pulling away, and, uh, we've been told that the bricks are extremely brittle, we've been told that, which means it can't be reused, uh, the mortar, uh, is not good, that we've been told that the tie-ins, uh, what we use today, today's construction, those tabs that tie the bricks together, um, have deteriorated, and some of that's come from water, I think is what we might have been told, um, and, uh, what I think we should do is try to maintain the historical, um, design of the building with new, with new brick and new mortar, and say, let's, let's keep the, the structure, you know, if it was twenty-seven feet wide, let's make sure it's twenty-seven feet wide, let's make sure the ceilings are as tall as the ceilings were, but let's use new material and, uh, and cover it with, uh, new stucco, and, uh, and I think I mentioned to Natalie, um, in a conversation with her office, you know, we can, we can have these, these plaques, you know, you go in these, these, uh, old courthouses and old buildings where it said, this, this wing was lost, you know, due to fire in nineteen twelve or whatever, you know, we can have all of that, those documents in there saying that, the date of the original building built, this wing was replaced in two thousand seventeen, you know, and, and do that type of thing, uh, and, and save some of the bricks, you know, have a brick in there that, you know, in a glass case or something like that, we get to use our building, you know, we'll, we'll get to use the building, and that's what, we want to save the building, but we also want to make it usable, and, uh, and we don't know that the east wing, the integrity of the east wing is not similar, or will show itself to be similar down the road, uh, of course, the big issue over there is that what we call the Civil War signature wall, um, and we certainly won't try and maintain the integrity of that, you know, and, and if it, just to talk forward about the east wing, if we wanted to save the integrity of that Civil War, um, signature wall, we don't, we need to wait to the point where, uh, where we lose that, we may need to do the same thing over there eventually, or whenever, um, but I, I was telling Natalie, you know, we don't know, um, the fifty-eight hundred dollars is not, is not a true figure either, because it says plus tribal related expenses, and they're coming from quite a distance, um, I don't know how long they intend to be here, but, uh, that number certainly, certainly correct, I think we know, basically what I'm trying to say is, I think we know enough already, and, uh, and Natalie has shared with us that Ree Thomas thinks we've done a due diligence to, uh, to not be penalized within the historical site.
So, what would the second step be? If we, what, what is the second phase, right, let's say that, he says, now, we don't want to move forward with, uh, have further evaluation, uh, let's move forward, so what, what's the next step, based on what, because there's no forwards?
Well, if we follow what he said, then I believe we would go back to clear skates and bring in James Andreas and explain to them, we do not want to do this testing based upon discussions with you, with Ree Thomas, et cetera, we feel like the walls need to come down, we need to rebuild them, and then, which do you feel, and the commissioners would have to decide, you want to rebuild one, two, or all three? Now, James has mentioned in the past, you know, there is the tie-in issue, but he said that is something that could be worked around, that would be his responsibility, and of course, clear skates, that's engineering firms, that's their responsibility to figure out how that works.
So, we don't have an idea of what the cost is to refurbish existing versus tear down and put up anew?
Uh, there's no way that you're gonna use all of those bricks over there, so even if, based upon discussions with James Andreas, there's still gonna have to be some new bricks, some new metal or something put in, because it is not five bricks wide in some spaces, some spaces, there's one brick between the outside of that building and the inside of that building, but no, we do not have any costs, because I've never been asked to get cost.
I mean, we haven't agreed on what, what we're gonna do yet, but refurbishment, to me, Commissioner Jordan, refurbishment is really, uh, not an option, I mean, because if you, refurbishment means you're using some of the material that's there, and the material's no good.
Right, and the, the interior.
Right.
Wood is still there, and the, um.
Floor.
Chair railings and things like that, so the inner wall is, I mean, that, that was torn out, but it can be replaced, I mean, it's still the same, we have that.
Right, James, right, James, when they removed the flooring for, and the chair railings, they took it apart and it's laying, and they made sure it's covered up, they did not damage that when they took it out.
Which is to, sort of, keep them intact.
Right.
So, the interior would be, um, the historic.
Right, so primarily looking at the foundation and, and wall refurbishment.
And I would say, for the public, it does say in this report that this, Mr. Crowe wrote, it says, in general, it appears to be a very stable floor proportions, um, you know, it doesn't say, you know, the brick is pulled away, but there is, it's not the statement.
Now, Chairman, you, uh, thank you for telling me about the four being, uh, possessed, um, from the involvement that you've had with these people, if we replace all three walls, will that get us, that will get us away from those, um, metal beams on the exterior, do you think?
Well, I think they would be covered up, uh, because, I mean, those steel beams are in there, but they would be covered up, um, they could fix, engineer the wall so it would be covered, and it would be a plain front.
So, the exterior, so the beams on the front of the building would remain?
No, if we, if we tore the walls down, we could ask if they could keep the metal as part of the foundation, I mean, you know, as part of the framework.
And I'm saying the metal, that they put in between the floors.
No.
Oh, okay.
That's what I was, you know, that would be still there, because they, those steel beams are, like, like that, or plant, um, but the, um.
About the ends, basically, the end.
Oh, the end would be, was straight up and down.
Everything would be replaced, if they.
Now, what I, just to be clear, looking at the front of the courthouse, there's a two.
They would be there.
They would be there, good, okay.
And, yeah, no, but the metal that's in between the floor joists is, or where the floor joists were, the, you know, the bottom and the middle, there's something that's staying, stayed like.
Well, I would be in favor, uh, just to, to give you my opinion, I would be in favor of finding the, uh, the method and the, and price of replacing, uh, three walls on that west wing.
Are you, are you making that a motion?
Well, I, I thought what I would do, just so that's what I'm in favor of, if anybody wants to add.
What is Neil Weathers, uh, he probably said, what, what is his recommendation in?
He wants us to proceed with this new company.
Say it.
No, with the.
Having him to replace?
No, to have him come do the study.
And clear skate is our architect, uh.
On record, yes.
And so, basically, we, we would be going against his recommendation?
We've gone against his recommendation in the past, because what he submitted was not correct, that's why work has stopped, they had some, they had, um, drawn plans, and when contractors came over to do the work, I was drawn, they could not do the work, because as they started doing the work, it was, it was not gonna work, that's when they discovered there were other issues involved that the engineers did not acknowledge or were not aware of.
And, Commissioner Owens, I would recommend that kind of motion, but need to have Mr. Zellweger come forward on tonight, and let us tell him what we feel to propose, and get his counters and get his expertise, so that we can make the, the informed decisions around it, and just make a motion to go forward right now without having a discussion with him, letting him know what he, how he wants to do.
Is that the correct, Neil? My Chairman, I have a motion. Chairman, I move that at our next meeting, November meeting, on the sixteenth, that we request the presence of Mrs. Zellweger to come, uh, to present to us any facts and suggestions that he has on our old courthouse reconstruction project, and, um, that he be here to entertain questions from the board before moving forward on the next step.
You've heard the motion from Commissioner Owens, that we invite Zan Willer to.
Zellweger.
Zellweger, well, I can't say.
That guy.
That guy, to appear on November the sixteenth, uh, to, uh, to answer questions that we have about the steps to take to move forward.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, a second, and discussion. Okay, motion's been made, a second and discussion. I, the only thing I would say that, I think we need to tell them that what we're, you know, what comments were made, that we need to understand what the pros and cons of this position is, go on forward with Crowe or to go, go ahead and sign and rebuild the three walls. And what like, you know, what like, can you give us the cost?
My Chairman, I encourage that, that can be briefed. Or their opinions on board right now.
Yeah, I do too. And I think, it could happen to Zellweger to come in here, but I think we all realize this place, this has been engineered to death and we know what needs to be done, but we'll see.
And I would also like to invite James Andreas, since he is the contractor who was doing the work.
Well, yeah, because they, they'd be on the same page. Okay, a motion has been made. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. Okay, we look forward to seeing. Okay, move down to new business. We have personnel board recommendations that were in your packet. I need, I guess we need to take these one by one. First one is the promotion of little across from transit, transit operator two to transit operator one.
My Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve this recommendation. Second.
Motion's been made, a second and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. And she has been a long-term employee and has worked to improve her service cases. Okay, approval of customer service representative job description, that's also in your packet. You could see what difference was in the word highlighted in the gray. Because it's not highlighted, but it's in the gray. One was about received payments for the utility bills and the other about the education and experience.
My Chairman, I believe that we approved that recommendation.
Motion's been made and approved, I mean, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay, also we have descriptions for elections clerk and election specialist job descriptions. Once again, these were to be added to our personnel policy descriptions. Any, entertain a motion.
My question, the elections director, they were helped by, by her.
She did not respond. She was requested and we did not hear a response. But based upon what we know that, we were trying to develop them so that if someone came in and asked what was their job responsibilities, they followed other counties and they are similar to what her part-time people currently do.
So she hasn't approved it?
As I said, she has never responded.
Whether it's nothing in gray here, like the other.
There were no job descriptions, there was no job description.
So this is first.
This is new, right.
I would certainly like to see if it's not got approved or not. I mean, I recognize this is what's about other counties, but.
I believe, I think she was contacted, sent in and measured, but she has not responded.
Was it pretty, did we draft this on another location? Did we make any changes to it or just like?
Yeah, they were pretty much, if I remember, it's been a while. They were pretty generic job descriptions.
Mr. George. Okay, I just wondered, you say the elections clerk recruits precinct officials and reviews list of proposed employees precinct officials submitted by a party chairman that is called the building. Yeah, while that may be done in, in Hurford County or Pasquetank, I don't know if it's done in Gates County. I mean, at that extent, it just seems prudent that we would want some type of acknowledgement, whether it be phone call, email, or whatever. Whether we're going to vote on it. Trying to put this into, into as an official description.
She was notified.
Is, is there anything in here that has a time constraint on it for any upcoming election?
No, the position says she has her full turn nine vacancies.
Would you, would you like to table this? And we were, once again, trying to, I mean, make contact, get our knowledge opportunity, but that is.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this pending concord of the elections director. Work is not official, but her concord is taken.
Do we have, do we have an application for, for?
Have anything pending as pertaining to an application or?
The job field. Mrs. Justice, if them have a description in our personnel policy, they did not have a job description.
When they, when they take that position, do they send a, to Human Resources, send in their job description once a year or once every two years or? The only problem, the way I see it, the motion was worded. She never concurred and it just, just hangs there.
Oh, we can table it, if we table it, there again, we'll come back. The thing that I'm trying to do in making this type of motion is, it puts us in a position we do need, we do want it, that kind of manager, kind of that, you know, we've got this, we've already approved it. Do you concur or don't you? We, you know, whether that be telephone or whatever, but it puts us in a position where we will make some, you know, active efforts to obtain concords and so we can move forward.
But what happens if she doesn't confirm?
Well, I can't, I can't see where, you know, this is a, this is a professional organization. We have to communicate. I don't think there's an option.
We might have to walk across the street.
Exactly, you know, you have to address this. I mean, they have a board of elections, so they have to be.
Okay, a motion has been made, a number of second.
Second.
Motion's been made and second, yeah, discussion.
Commissioner George, I think we should solicit a signature from her and from the board chairman, from both, from both of them. On a document that says on such and such a date, they reviewed this and approved that. And I'd like to add that to the motion. Commissioner George, is he agree?
I'm in agreement with that and I'll update my motion to approve, have them acknowledge it with signature.
Can we put it by a midline? So it's not hanging out there like other issues?
Yes, from the beginning, I don't want it to hang there. Well, how about I do so with the meeting?
Okay, so the motion isn't to send this to the Board of Elections Director and to the Chair of the Board of Elections for them to sign off on and, or if they have any problems with it, by December, not by December meeting?
Well, if we just send it to them, I think there may need to be some interactions. If you've got a, if you've got a.
No, I mean, I interpret her, because I've got a colleague, Mr. Pinkinson, about another issue, so I will talk to him about this as well.
Yeah, I think we need some face-to-face communications and for, or you telephoning. That's all that.
Okay, everybody understands the motion we're voting on? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the next one from the Personnel Board is the Justice Steph and Gray for Elections, part-time staff, to place them on the salary scale and they would be placed at grade nine, step six.
That is what their current salary?
That will place them at that, right out there. At a, they were at an odd number that was not on a step. So this will put them on a step. And that, that was like a two cent increase or wasn't it?
Yes, they were never included when we did the reclassification for everyone paid more percent of the dollars. So just put them as close as ours as we can without reducing them. That's what they.
And this is the same as with number five, recommendation number five, same situation.
Okay, you all have a motion?
My Chairman, would you accept a motion for, one motion for four and five?
I start to win.
My Chairman, I make the motion that we accept the recommendation of Personnel Board on number four and five with the step-ups of the elections in the legislature D's class.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. And this is all for just the part-time workers. Any other part of discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed. I think we look over all those. We have budget amendments, that's Mr. Pittman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You should have amendments eleven, three, thirteen in your packets. We actually did fourteen at the last meeting because it was created after this. We're already in your packets. Number eleven is to budget for E M P G grant funds that were received at the end of last fiscal year and were not expended. We actually do this every year. They send us a final payment usually late in May and we were not able to spend those funds before the end of the fiscal year. So we do a carry forward amendment every year to pull that money back out of fund balance before we spend it, sure. Number twelve is to budget funds within the old courthouse, historic courthouse fund. We had budgeted to spend money and transfer it to that project out of the general fund in the annual budget process, but we did not amend the capital budget to spend those funds. So this money has already been moved, it's already there and is strictly for budgetary purposes. And number thirteen, there were some leftover funds in the Genesis Grant last year that have to be returned to the state. The money was paid to us and not spent. So that money will have to be returned to the state and this amendment is to budget for that refund.
Okay, I think maybe we can do all these to refund.
My Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve budget amendment eleven, twelve, thirteen. Second.
Motion's been made, seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of budget, or to approve the budget amendment eleven, twelve, and thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Now we have a comprehensive senior citizen plan presentation. I don't know how much more time we can, since we've already read this. And we had already prepared this like two months ago. This is, a lot of it is kind of similar to what you had in your packet.
I'm not sure what you.
We were discussing senior citizens centers before. We have about from the A G, the nation and all, and the operations and programs.
I'm going to be as brief as possible. First off, I'd like to recognize the Agent Cass Force and the Subcommittee for the Senior Citizens. And the day after they were staying, but here. So we've been working for almost a year trying to look at what it would mean for a senior center in Gates County. So what you have before you is a notebook with everything compiled so you get a full view of what it means to have a senior center. And just to give you the overview of the notebook, you have a complete plan, very detailed with appendix. But in the front, you have an abstract of that plan with the recommendations from the committee on what they would like to see in the various components. And then you have a table of contents. So I'm going to try to briefly go over for you and the citizens what it means for Gates County. And we started out with the demographics of Gates County over twenty fifteen to twenty thirty. And as you can see, about forty-two percent of our population would be age fifty and above for the use of a senior center. The needs are expressed, telling you about the needs of the senior center, senior citizens and how this will help improve the overall quality of living in Gates County. And it also addresses Maslow's kind of often the needs, which talks about self-actualization, esteem, love, belonging, safety, and physiological aspects of being a human. And we also talked about the types of centers. So you had your Center of Merit, your Center of Excellence, and your multipurpose center as a facility. As we got into this process, it became very clear that a senior center is not just a throw a building up and you have a program that the doors open from eight to five. It is a very intense, comprehensive program that should be implemented for the seniors. And it requires certification from the state if you are to access any of the funds that they have available going toward a certified senior center. Many counties say they might have a senior center, but sometimes they'll just call the nutrition feeding site a senior center. So in clarity on how many senior centers there are, when we did this process back when Colby was here with D S F, we were told we were one of three. And then when we started looking again, we were told we were last. So we went back to the state and according to the state, we are one of a total of four that do not have a senior center. And I called those counties that did not have one. And when I asked, I called the phone number, what came up on the red? And they said, well, yes, we do. But then when we called the state, they said many times that they're not following the certifications of what the state requires to call them an official senior center. So with that clarification, the senior center must have certification. And in your packet, there's a scope tool that's about this thick that has to be completed by the director with documentation showing they're doing all the things involved with a senior center. And you have to be in operation for a year or programming for a year before you can apply for that certification. And Alamoar Commission Agent helps with the technical aspects of a senior center. Under the operations, our recommendation was that it be a new department under the authority of the county commissioners and the director of senior center would. of the county commissioners, and the director of senior center would serve as a county department head, and would be under the supervision of the county manager, and no other program, agency, or department head would have jurisdiction or control of a senior center facility or program. So that was our initial recommendation of the operations. As we looked at facility, that would be in your hands on how you want to handle that, but we did a extensive review of buildings here in the county, and that is in your appendix in the back, and it's labeled... Let's see. I have a label on that. It's labeled Senior Center Subcommittee of Donations and Cash Force Report, and it had a variety of revisions, and that is because as we were going through the process, we had requests to look at different options and to clarify some information, but in that report, it, we went through all the buildings that were made available to us as potential options that either are up for sale or people came to the committee to express considering their, their building. The only facility not on this is the Buckland request that came to you at your last county commissioner meeting, but he came and discussed with us what they're proposing. And as on that listing is the community center as an addition to DeLuise Sonor Factory, Family Foods, Taylor Pharmacy, the dental complex, Marcia's House of Flowers, and of course the Gates House, that said they would have some space just for some meetings or program. And so in that report, which I'm not gonna go through, in the back it had a spreadsheet that had exit showing what we felt the assessment was for each of the locations, and like I said, you would have to add the Buckland proposal to this, because this was already done before they presented to you all. The space requirements are a minimum of four thousand square feet, of which thirty-two hundred must be used for senior programming, so if you were to consider co-locating the senior center with another facility, the thirty-two hundred feet for sure definitely has to be identified solely for the use by senior center clientele, and they give you a detail on how you look at space as to whether it would classify as that. So under facility, our recommendation is first choice, of course, the development of standalone multipurpose senior center with the goal of becoming a center of excellence within one year of operation and programming, and the facility should have a minimum required space. Footage layout should include several multipurpose rooms for multipurpose activities, and then we go on in the detail of all the space. We did tour all the senior centers around this area, starting in Purquimans, Chawan, Currituck, Camden, Passmatan, and went to Wenton to see what facilities they had, what their pros and cons, and how they were using them, and all of them have good facilities. Some were more, were a little maybe bigger than others, or had more space, but in all in all, they all had multiple rooms for a variety of activities, it incorporated the senior nutrition program, and it's like a one-stop shop for seniors that are able to access all their services needed, or the different departments that provide seniors services, might have a representative come there to meet with them, like SHIP Met is one of the ones that Extension right now is doing, but it was in that department for them, which is the Senior Health Program for Medicare Part D, and they had made recommendations also, maybe with their building, they wished they had done this. We identified a couple of things that would be nice if we were to build new, to have for the senior center. Our second choice is a co-located facility, and we listed the features there if you were to try to co-locate it with another department. And we looked at the target population as being fifty, and our recommendation, fifty and above, the Subcommittee recommended that it start at fifty, and then talking with the other directors because of, you have some spouses that might not have hit the senior center age for some programs, but all the senior centers allow them to become members of the senior center and participate. And currently, as of right now, that's about forty percent of our population. In ten years, that's gonna be forty-two percent. Also, it gets them starting to understand and support the senior center while they're still very active. Also, it helps to recruit for some of your senior programs, like the Senior, North Carolina Senior Games Program that we currently have members participating in, and even though there are some funds that only allow certain age groups to use, like AC, I always give them the AC Beach, the sixty-five plus funds, if the program that you're offering does not require any cost, say an exercise class, then you don't have to charge anybody below sixty-five for it, but if there's a charge, you just find other funds to cover that cost for those individuals who don't qualify for that particular grant fund money. Some of the senior citizen sites were very strict on who they allowed to come, meaning it only could be a county resident, and that was just one county. Others were a little more lenient, they really didn't get into your location, you just filled out your paperwork, and they provided a comprehensive application, so once you fill that out, it made you eligible to go look at the other services, so you're not filling out five or six different application forms. The next thing, hours of operation, it has to be a full-time basis, so if your county operates on a forty-hour work week, it has to operate on a forty-hour work week. If it's thirty-seven and a half, then that's fine, as long as the rest of your county departments are operating on that same full-time basis. Also, the centers did have some evening or night or weekend hours, depending on programming, that they were offering. So our recommendation is Monday through Friday with additional evening, weekend hours for program and special events. Under our programming services, you have individual services, which include information and referral, case assessment, assessment, et cetera, and then you have group services, and those are like your congregant meals, educational sessions, fitness, and et cetera, so that you would have to have a variety of programming going on, and we also recommended that there be evaluation by the participants to ensure that you're meeting the needs of the seniors. We want to make sure that what is offered, if you're able to use that and to ensure your certification and have that one-stop-shop strategy to employ, should, should be employed to ensure your senior citizens are easily accessed, and they can access the services. And space can be provided for a, say, a DSS rep to come in to meet with clientele and/or share programming, in some cases in the other senior centers that they had that, especially if they needed to have some confidential conversation going on.
As a matter of certification in this area, I made a note here, with a seminar, a certain number of seminars during the year, being a valid substitute for a program where certification is concerned?
Yes, you have seminars for awareness, you have actual physical participation, learning, it's a variety of different things.
So in other words, and, so the way I'm asking it is, to qualify for the certification, if one of the areas, you have seminars in that classification area, that is justified? Or is the program have to be four days a week, three days a week?
No, it doesn't have to be four days, I'm gonna say three days a week.
You're saying by staffing and stuff?
Right, and when we get the staffing, I'll share why we suggested that we do that. So it also has a very strong volunteer base, you use a lot of volunteers to maximize your resources, and they have volunteer applications, et cetera, volunteer recognition programs. Under staffing, some of the senior centers had larger staffs than others, you are required for certification to have one director full-time. However, if that director, which has to have the skills of being able to network, collaborate, and resource development, plus programming, there's no way one person can keep a building open, do all of that, and not meet with other people, and they go to training. So we recommended that the senior center employ a minimum of one full-time director and two part-time program managers of twenty hours each, which allows you to flex their time, depending on what's needed to keep the center open, but they also would have additional duties of programming, and they had various job descriptions which showed what, all you could have as far as making sure you're meeting the certification and having a quality program. And I've already discussed the skill level needed, but they definitely need to have a passion for working with people, and especially working and understanding senior population, just like you have teachers who need to be certified, have a passion for working with youth, et cetera. This is another target population that has special needs as far as understanding how to work with them. Salary and benefits would be covered under your current salary schedule, and the people that are employed are required to have professional development and training, and that, the number of hours is based on their full-time, part-time status, and that is part of the certification process also. So we did recommend that whatever budget would be established, funds would be there for professional development, especially as it is required for certification and delivery of evidence-based programs, and that was another thing, that they look at the type of programs you do, and they must be evidence-based. And we listed all potential collaborators, and then we got into funding sources, which is your HCCBG funds that already come to the county, which we're not saying you take them and move them to something different, they all start becoming a part of the funding umbrella for what's going on for the senior center. And then you have general purpose funds, which come from North Carolina, based on your certification status, so you do not access those until you get certified. Now, when, at, in the beginning, it was a lot of money, and you know, as years have passed, money dwindles, but that is the pot of money right now that is there for senior centers. They also have Title III D health promotion funds that I think Alamoar Commission administers those for those evidence-based programs that counties are requesting funds for, and there's a ten percent cash match for that, and there's a twenty-five percent cash match for the general purpose funds. And then the other funds that were cited for senior centers were coming from, of course, county state government and from grants. The recommendation is that we have multiple funding sources from county, state, federal funds along with grants, fundraising, and donations, and counties would, county would ensure funding level supports and a certified center and qualified staff. The, all the centers also had, well, economic development-type plan as far as they would do fundraisers, have major fundraisers throughout the year to help assist with needs of the county, but in our area, most of the funding comes from the county commissioners for the staff and the building. Under the budget recommendation, our first choice, of course, would be handling to allow startup and operational expenses with the two to three staff positions. Our second choice would be the baseline budget, which includes startup and operating expenses, and you have in your packet a budget that was done from the operations side all the way up to the platinum level. So we gave you the least, the most, and all in between, and you can pick and choose, and that kind of shows you what the senior budget looks like, and this does not, I don't think it includes land, of course, if you're trying to build or what have you. So we, we thought that would be helpful, so you could see what, what the budget would look like. Under sustainability, we listed a variety of different opportunities to increase funds or keep funds flowing into the county. The budget, if you're looking for that, is at the very back, is the last thing, and you have budget narrative, which is, describes what's in each line, and you have the spreadsheet that has the five columns. So that's a brief overview of the comprehensive plan. When Mr. Smith came before us, his proposal for this, the site to be at Buckland was that they were interested in building what we needed and renovating the Buckland site as an additional use, but they were aware that that building that they're, that is there now would probably not be conducive to what we needed for a senior center, but could be used as additional office space, et cetera, and that if they renovated it and allowed us to use it, they would have a contract in place for indefinite use, only with the stipulation that we would allow them to have the Smith family reunion on the property once a year, and I think it was August, and they were recommending so much, so much acreage out of that, four acreage for that. Of course, they would want to talk to the county about specific tax release, and they wanted you to consider that within one year of that offer standing. So that's what he shared with us, of course, we, you know, thanked him for the information, so like I said, that did not get in, and I think Natalie was there, and of course, Mr. Jordan were there for the presentation. So the committee, do we, did I cover everything? Anything else need to be added? Do you all have any questions?
Well, you did a very thorough job, I will say that. Wonderful nighttime reading.
Be careful what you ask for.
Yes, absolutely.
Well, just, so that we're all on the same page, the next gap moving forward is not necessarily to improve the budget, but to approve the task forces moving forward in determining the location, possibly talking with Smith on the Buckland Plantation seat, if they would want to move forward with presenting a plan for building, a building, building has to be at least forty by one hundred. And basically, we're asking the commission to move forward with further information on the location of the facility.
You have all the locations we've looked at, except for the Buckland Plantation, so we need you to say, we want you, you need to prioritize and say, this is what we want to do, and look at this versus this, or have one, two, three, top three, or what have you, so we can move forward with additional research. Senator Cook is coming in December to hear our proposal, and we've also delivered one to Representative Howard Hunter, and he's on the radar for us as far as us requesting special appropriations for this. So we've done here all we can do until you all say, okay, we're interested, let's look at these top three possibly for facility that we are interested in, and then y'all find either additional information. And as far as funding, once we hear from Senator Cook how he sees it going, it might be additional letter-making or conversations you all would need to have just later. be additional letter making or conversations you all would need to have just later concerning funding, along with whatever you decide you want to do as far as funding from a local perspective.
Well, I can say that, by the way, great proposal to reiterate, you and the entire committee, very comprehensive and detailed. Certainly, any decision that I would make about a facility that you present us with or an alternative idea that I might have, is going to be driven by appropriations, possible appropriations from legislation, as you mentioned, approach them, as well as where the dollars come going forward from our budget, and then maybe any ideas with fundraising from public grants and all of that. In other words, if I had, let's say I had four that I thought were solid proposals, each one's going to have a different cost to make it certifiable. So I would need to know where the dollars, where the dollars are coming from. You might look back at me and say, yeah, Jack, where are the dollars coming from? But I think we, in order to have a great facility, we don't need a good facility, we need a great facility. In order to have a great facility, we need to just uncover all of those pages, turn over all of those rocks. Maybe it needs to be a committee challenged with how do we do this financially? Because to accomplish, in our lifetime, what we want to, what we want to accomplish is going to take some outside donations, grants, appropriations type of, to the board, that's to the public and to the committee, but to the board. For me, making decisions, the finance, financial thing has to be a part. Now, I agree that we need to say, where do we go from here? Mr. Jordan, we don't let it die right here, we say, where do we go from here?
Yeah, the money piece is always something we've got to have a firm handle on. Like I said, one of the, what do you say, one of the reasons we provided Senator Cook and Howard Speaker there is to find out if they can move forward trying to appropriate some legislation that will assist the county with putting up a senior center. It's been done in other counties. At one point in time, other counties had received a hundred thousand dollars towards that senior center. And, you know, certainly, that's, we've got a good chance of getting Senator Cook and Representative Howard Hunter on board with that. At this time, I think it is crucial that we nail down some potential locations. If we, if it was feasible to do the Buckland offer, we'd probably be talking, taking three hundred, at least three hundred thousand dollars off of the table or facility cost. Of course, you're going to still have the maintenance, but that can be offset by, as you pointed out, fundraisers, grants, or whatever. But I, at this point, I think we need to move forward with narrowing down the actual location where we propose to be, getting some kind of serious commitment from Buckland Plantation, once the commissioners decide that we're moving forward, and possibly bringing back some proposal where these funds are going to come from. And, you know, the county, it's going to cost us something. But I was listening to a senior several days ago who lives in Franklin, and they were at the senior center there, and she was telling me about one of the county residents, I won't call her name, that was over there. I mean, she comes there all regularly, Franklin, out. She goes from Gates County over there to that senior center. And, you know, that's where she spends the time, I don't know how many times a week or whatever. But we've got county residents that are utilizing other facilities out of the county, and certainly, I think it's a plus for us to move forward, seeing how we can make available facilities in the county as well.
I read a good job in your term committee, you've done a whole lot of work. And I've just, I have a question on, how many do you think, I look at the percentages and I see three thousand and four thousand, depending upon the age, numbers, or what have you, percentage-wise. From that percentage, do you have a ballpark guesstimate, if you would, on how many would actually attend?
I have no idea, other than the quality of program will dictate that. Right now, you have seniors that just go to the community center to get a meal, and that's it. But I'm considered in that age population. So I know myself and others, as we've discussed this, and seeing what's available, would certainly participate if we had the quality that we were seeing in some of the other counties, which gives the seniors an outlet to get out of the house, it helps them with their mental health issues, to stay active, which reduces your costs if they become inactive, and it allows them to volunteer, it allows them to do a lot of things that, once you retire, is not a lot to do unless you just want to sit and watch the mail live every day. I'm not one of those. So it gives those seniors that are healthy and good mental health avenue to contain that and continue that, and at the same time, help others. So, like I said, if forty-two percent of your population are seniors, I would say on any given average, you would probably have, I'm trying to remember what the other seniors said, they had anywhere from, what, five, six, seven hundred people participating in various things, not every day, but, you know, coming to various activities.
So it could be a fairly large facility, looking at our population and percentage at the age.
When we went to the different counties, to just give you an idea, most of them were standalone. Currituck has a co-located type facility. If you've been to the new Currituck YMCA that sits there, and then you have the Park and Red, the senior center is in the middle of it. They have a door to the Y. When the Y is open and the senior center is open, there's a gate that lifts up, the senior centers can move back and forth if they're a member of the Y. If they're not, they can go through the door to the Parks and Red and use their gym and facilities there. At any time that one of those buildings is closed, that door is locked, so you cannot walk between them, but you have access when it's open. Some of your counties had the director under Parks and Red for the budget, but they still operated kind of independently to manage their own program. Others had actual buildings where they had multiple rooms for all the things that they needed, and it was standalone with their own parking. So when we went in the morning, it was very, you had a lot of different things kind of going on. When we went to one facility, you had some that were sitting, talking, you had the bridge group, you had some guys over here with the pool. They showed us the calendar, they had the health and wellness activities scheduled, they showed all the different activities people were doing as far as the different classes, lots of reading materials, other things that were around if you just wanted to come and sit and enjoy being around people. We walked in on one exercise class that was going on, and they had enough space to do the different things they wanted to do scheduled throughout the day. And all of them had at least one or two vans to help with transportation in addition to using the inter-regional transportation program.
I've had a couple thoughts. I think, you know, the financial part is a big concern, because we have a, kind of, we're not sure about what future holds for us tax-wise, free or bail coming up. We're not sure if I had that's going to play out with the numbers. And of course, I've already been reading some papers about schools as well. So I am, the financial part is a little concerning to me. Also, the location. You know, when you talk about Buckland, from where I live, that's, I mean, for our seniors on that end, that is very long ways. I would prefer to have something more centralized.
Well, if you notice, our recommendation, first choice was centralized location.
Yes, because, you know, I know of someone in the county who lives in Gates that goes, well, well, that's five miles down the road, or no, well, maybe ten miles down the road, I don't know how far well is from the line, but it's not long. You know, but, you know, that's, and I can understand people in the Gates area going to Buckland. You can get there as quick as you could go if you were going to Sundar. And also, I think the location of more centralized would be a better selection idea for county residents about getting there and using the facility. And, you know, as we all, we're all going to grow older or we're going to die, so let's all grow older gracefully and actively, you know. I rather, where I, the Westside.
But right now, everybody, after their finale and list of qualified.
So, yeah, but I am concerned by location, and I am concerned by finances, by the money. It always comes down to that question of money. So what do, you want us to watch about?
We want you to let us know as far as facility, where we need to spend our time pursuing detailed information based on all we've given you, and if anything else comes up that we aren't aware of, but we need to know definitely from you all. This is our top three choices we want you to look at to further research this day, if we can have it here as we look for money, because there's no need of us spending any more time looking at these facilities if none of these are the ones that you think should, it should be in, even if we got the money, if that's not where you want it, then we're still at ground zero trying to figure out how to use the money. So we need to hone in on location and then continue the dialogue with finances.
How often is your committee going to meet after this program?
It depends on what we have to get done. Our subcommittee meets separately from the task force. Task force generally meets every other month, but we've been meeting as needed to get the work done on this.
Well, Mr. Jordan served on the committee, so he's more versed on the conversation that for, put this presentation together. I'll put you on the spot, sir.
Thank you.
Jack is good.
Well, as I said, this is something that we discussed, feel it's needed, recognizing there's a cost to it associated with it. Also, feel there's returns as well. It's been pointed out, you know, the healthier, the more vibrant you can keep your senior citizen, the less costly it is to appropriately take care of them at the various nursing homes and assisted lives, so, whatever. So it is something that, it's known to work. If it didn't work, you wouldn't have it in ninety-six other counties as a part of the governmental program. So I think it's something that, you know, we seriously need to move forward with. I do agree with Commissioner Horford that a centralized location is probably what would be best for the county. And, you know, having said that, I think that, you know, my motion would be to move forward, looking at a centralized location and bringing back to the board the various financial avenues that we know are available. Some, we don't know them all, there may be potentials out there, but bring that back, centralized location. What are the metrics in order to make it happen? I don't know if we can incorporate the community center. I don't, you know, we've got a space issue there. I don't think we have, I don't know if we have a lane available to add on, a part to it. But I do feel we need to move forward with allowing the task force to get this additional information, bring it back to us, and let's look at feasibility of making it happen. So I don't know if that's enough, but I'm in favor of moving forward.
Okay, do we have L. comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make that a motion, President Chair, to authorize the committee to move forward with senior center project in regards to looking at the most feasible centralized location, and also bringing back to the board the potential funding sources based on discussions with the Senator and House Representatives, as well as investigation, potential grants, and also an estimate of what county costs could possibly be.
Okay, a motion has been made to charge the committee to identify a location, identify choices of location.
Centralized.
Centralized location, as well as financial sources and county cost. Is that?
That pretty much sounds good, ma'am.
Okay. You've heard the motion, do I care? A second.
Second.
Okay, a motion has been made, and second, that we charge the committee to identify centralized location choices, identify financial sources for money, and what would be the potential cost to the county. Okay, do we have time for it?
Well, that wasn't going to be my question, but that might not, that might be something that the committee would want to know. But when you're talking about centralized choice, does this include only option one or two, that's either co-located or standalone, or could that possibly include one of the smaller sites with the intent that within a certain number of years, an additional site could be identified so that it can meet the four thousand square foot?
I would do it in increments.
Right, if that's why, that might be, you know, I guess that depends on the financial side.
I think, that's a good comment.
Yes.
I think that would be something to charge you guys to run through your, well, first of all, locations, we want to be certified. So that would detect some of that, but that's a good, that's a good comment, and I would like to, I don't think it would be a motion, we're just in dialogue here, but I would say that in the process of brainstorming or whatever, to consider a site that's not to be a permanent site, but to be what we call a growing site.
Temporary site, something like that. They do it in increments.
That's great of you.
Okay. I don't, do we need to change the motion, or do we just, you understand that you might find a location that's not a permanent site, but a temporary site? Okay, a motion's been made, and second, this is L. for our discussion. Do we want to put a, and I guess, when you report back, I know the holiday season's kind of upon us, November is some of people very busy, so.
How about January, if you make that position, if you make that? How about in January, if you make that commission meeting, like January, two, seven?
The holiday season is upon us. I would say within the first quarter of the first year.
Yeah, I would think, I agree, that maybe just within the first quarter of the year.
So then that would also help with, if they had to make the finances for budget time?
Yeah, budget time, also, the general assembly needs a short session when.
I think it's starting in February, but.
Yeah, I mean, because, you know, I'm not, that's a piece that you're going to be interested in looking at, and, but I don't know if they can consider it, because if it's, they only consider fields that have.
That did, that weren't.
Were already.
Didn't go to committee and die, I can't think of their official time.
They, it's already been introduced, but have not been added on.
I know Senator Cook is going to be out of session, that was his decision, I believe. December was the day that he wanted.
But I think they can give you a general idea, because that might be a key piece, if that is sponsored in centralized. Okay, first quarter.
Okay, and when you get a chance at home, because of time here, if you go to YouTube and put in Cleveland County Senior Center, they have, they're, that's state of the art, so you'll get an idea of what a very state of the art center looks like, but.
Cleveland.
Cleveland County Senior Center.
Okay, a motion's been made, and second, if on the floor of discussion, we have the vote on it. Okay, all those in favor say aye. All opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, committee. Moving, let's do these last two very quickly. Fire department relief fund, four months, you have in your packets, one from Gatesville, Hoppsville, Sundury, Urah.
We need to do it by department. Make it clearer and easier.
Okay, we'll take Gatesville, that's the first one that I have. That's the first one I have, Gates Fire Metric, they would recommend that we appoint Webster Harold and Colin Ryan. Webster to a one-year term, and Colin Ryan to a two-year term.
Move, do we accept that recommendation?
Second.
Same motion's been made, and second, discussion, here and now, all those in favor say aye. Okay, moving on to the Hoppsville Fire Department, they would recommend the appointment of A. Al Stiles Jr. to a one-year term, and Ronald Taylor to a two-year term. Do I hear a motion?
So move, second.
A motion's been made, and second, here and now, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, we have from the Urah Fire Department, we are recommending that Billy Felton to a one-year term, and Esther to a two-year term. Do I hear a motion?
So move, second.
Okay, a motion's been made, and second, here in session, here and now, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Billy, you didn't vote again, so.
No.
On behalf of the Sundury Fire Department, they recommend that John Taylor, John Taylor Pittrell to a one-year term, and Daniel Bright to a two-year term.
So move, second.
Motion's been made, and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, Sandy has one for us.
Yes, sir, Gates, we do not have the letter, we'll get that to you, it is in route, but Gates would like to, like you to appoint Marilyn Harold to a one-year term, and Rodney Parker to a two-year term.
Marilyn Harold and.
Rodney Parker.
Rodney Parker.
Move to accept.
Move to accept, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, a motion's been made, and second, the appointment, Miss Harold, Miss Parker to the Gates Fire, Fire Relief Fund, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
Now, we've rolled through those. We also have a letter of support, it's been requested from the Northeast North Carolina Rural Heritage Museum Incorporated. If you remember, this gentleman came for us for FYI sometime in the summer, he's trying to get a rural heritage museum established in Eaton to show traditional farming methods and equipment, so that our future generations will know about farm heritage, and they would just like a letter of support. What is the pleasure for?
I would make a motion to give them a letter of support for establishing that museum.
Okay, motion's been made, I hear a second.
Second.
Motion's been made, and second, discussion?
One of mine could be in Gates County.
Okay, somebody gave him a landing for Chilwell County.
I understand him.
I think he's from Chilwell County, as some farmer has, I think, given him some money. Okay, motion's been made, and second, any on the floor of discussion? Here and now, all those in favor of sending a letter of support to, for this museum, say aye. All opposed? Okay. I would say we take a break, but we have just citizens' comments left, commissioners, and then we'll close session, we'll take a break.
May I say something?
Yes, ma'am. Citizens' comments.
I'm Ann Howell from the Urah District, I just have a quick question. I was late getting here, I apologize for that, but I wonder what the status of the CAC committed for the Gates House is, I've had several asking questions about that, and I know Deborah Shear has retired as of last Friday, so we just wondered what things are going.
That information has to come back from the state. We had to send, as Ms. Shear recommended, we were to send a letter to the state, and then, once we hear back from them, then the appointments will be outlined, once the Department of Law Commission allows us to, those applications will have to be accepted. Laura Almarico will be kind of the temporary fill-in, since Ms. Shear has retired.
Okay.
So we'll wait to hear back from the state. We have sent the.
If I could get her name from you.
Yes.
Because we don't know who contacted we have.
And we have sent the letter to the state, and they've got to respond, so that we can.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, I'm glad the people are interested in serving.
I don't know about serving, but I'm only on the committee of getting questions, and we don't know what to.
Okay, we all start, come up, volunteers for us. Okay, any else citizens' comments? We'll start dying at the far end.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, I, as my fellow commissioners, I certainly pridefully serve you, primarily to see the interaction between you and the county manager, and the commissioners themselves. Sometimes we sit and we, and you may wonder what's going on, but we get to what's, and then somewhere along the line, we figure for whom, and then for what the quality is. But primarily then, as you've heard Madam Chairman mention, is the cost, what is the cost. So we're presented with the facts, and we're proud to serve you, and please keep coming to us and bringing your thoughts and what you wish us to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul, for showing up again this morning, and as Commissioner Freeman was saying, we, you see, we are presented with many requests, and all these requests require money. And of course, in the end, the money comes from you. So we just appreciate y'all coming in and listening, and learning all the facts, at least as good as we know them. And Randy, good to see you back there this morning, good to see the Sheriff's Department represented this morning.
All right, well, I too thank everyone for being here and being a part of the commissioners' meeting. We thank everyone for the input that's given, thank you for the feedback that we get, and as always, feel free to contact the commissioners, we may not solve every problem, but certainly we'll take a look at it, do what we can. And I always reiterate that, is that, you know, if we not contacted, we don't know, and when we do know, we do make the best effort we can to try to make a difference. That's why I'm here, we're here to serve, to make a better quality of life for all of our citizens, also to try to ensure that we have the best workforce possible, I think we have a very good workforce, and we want to do that.
Jack, can I interrupt you just a little bit, I may have something. I want to record, to make everybody aware, and let you make your neighbors aware, that next week on November the eleventh at eleven, eleven eleven at eleven, there will be a Veterans Day celebration here in the courthouse, again, responsible by the Historical Society, and please bring all of your, especially your veterans, and anyone who is supportive of the military, just bring them in. Retired Major General Aaron Lizzie will be the guest speaker, and of course, he's a Gatesville Navy, and just encourage all of you to come and bring whoever you will.
Should be right here.
Yes.
Good interruption. Everybody who's here, everybody who sees this on the internet, I want to encourage you to call the county manager and give the county manager your name, and what part of the county you're from, and tell her that you are in favor, or not in favor, of the senior center. That's what we need to hear, and, because we need support. And so make that call, tell your friends to make that call, if you are in favor, and you want to promote the senior center, then even if you call people that you think will support it and promote it, do that. So I challenge those who are in favor of it to get out the word, so that we can hear. We, you know, we do see the same faces, you know, and we gonna like that, we like that support, but it's hard to get the word out on certain things, and we need to hear if there's great support out there, or if there's warm support, medium support, that's what we need to hear, because it does affect our decisions, and we need to hear that early on in the game, and today is early on in the game. So I want to encourage everybody to participate in this particular decision with a phone call, or with getting the word out. Thank you very much for being here.
Once again, thank y'all for coming, I don't know what I can say, that all commissioners have not already said, I had planned to talk about the Veterans Day celebration, but Commissioner Felton has done that, but I do encourage you to get the word I to your veterans, we do have a good program, and we do have some refreshments afterwards, and so a good time to remember the sacrifices so many families in Gates County have made for us to be here today. Once again, you know, we need to hear from you, I think all of us are listening to what our constituents are saying, we try to find solutions to the problems that we have, we're not going to please everybody all the time, but we do listen, we try our best, and I just wish we had unlimited resources, so that we could do everything that we would like to do, but sometimes we have to pick and choose, and I hope you will understand that as well. Listen, have a good rest of the day, it's a wonderful day outside, hopefully, I hope it stops raining, and you, you know, have a great weekend, great Thanksgiving, and we will see you back. Well, we have an army before Thanksgiving.
November sixteenth.
The sixteenth, so we'll see you back here November sixteenth. Thank you for coming in once again. Okay, we will take a.
Close session. One forty-three, three eighteen, eleven eight, three, four, five, six.
Okay, a motion's been made, that we enter into this closed session, do I hear a second?
Second.
A second's been made, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed?
We'll make sure you hear a second.
Okay, do I hear a motion come out of closed session?
So move, second.
Motion's been made, and second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Okay, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Motion's been made, and properly second, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Oh, count adjournment recess.
That's okay. You can adjourn.
Okay, don't recess till, when you have something, when you don't need.
It's okay, you can adjourn.
Okay.